Welcome to the Village of Woodbury March 20th Planning Board Meeting. I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, a little bit of a heavy agenda tonight, so we'll get right to it. Has the board been in a receipt of the three six minutes?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to offer one modification to those minutes to have the motion for 21 Bandoles reflect that Planning Board contagial recused himself from the vote. So I'll offer a motion to accept the minutes with that modification.
Sorry.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item, Woodbury Commons, Bosie Line and Company. I'm not going to bother reading the rest of it, everybody knows where the commons is. Good evening.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, oh, actually, there's no ladies on this board.
No. Is your microphone?
What?
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, you can take it out if it's easier.
Not really. Okay, if I need, if I need to take it out, it'll be for him. Jennifer Canaric on behalf, from Price and Me Showman and Darmody on behalf of Simon. This is for the Woodbury Commons Premium Outlets. This is our third appearance with respect to this project. To briefly summarize, we're seeking site plan approval, special permit ARB for a proposed kiosk for a tenant, Bo Lachin and Company, to operate a champagne bar. We initially appeared back in August. We received Board Engineer's comments. We prepared a response letter to those comments dated August 10, 2023, to address those items in his initial report. And then we received recently another Village Engineer report dated February 16th, which we take no exceptions to the recommendations and referrals noted therein. We also, at the request of the Village Attorney, provided her with provisions of the lease redacted as well as proposed tenant application to the state liquor authority, which I confirmed today, they do have a temporary conditional permit from the SLA to operate. On hand with me this evening is Dave Mistrato, General Manager, who I'm sure you're all familiar with. The exhibits that we provided with the application were the photo renderings of the proposed kiosk, plans prepared by the architect dated May 22, 2023. We also submitted an ESO map and a utility plan as requested by your engineer to provide a brief overview of this proposed kiosk. It's going to be replacing the previously approved and existing double kiosk known as Sugar Honey and Candy Company. The champagne bar proposed intends to serve alcohol in some limited, prepared, and/or packaged light fare such as finger sandwiches, caviar and oysters, salad, and charcuterie with a few frozen items requiring reheating. Like other kiosks, fully sprinkled. There are existing utility connections which include water, sewer, electric, and gas, and it will comply with any and all building and health code requirements. The area of the proposed kiosk has an outdoor seating area, which may be used by any customer shopping within the center, and it won't be reserved for the champagne bar, but will be controlled by the, by the kiosk tenant. And lastly, the 2020, there was a question from the Board Engineer about the overall ESO plan from 2012 for the site and area. It will continue to remain, and there'll be no encroachments proposed with this kiosk, which is currently existing. And that basically sums up our application.
Thank you very much. Does any members of the boards have questions to the applicant? Okay, I know we are here for a public hearing tonight, but we'll go to Kelly or Jim.
I have nothing further.
The only thing I'd like to add is that we had received a response from the Fire Department on the ESO referral, and they took no exception.
Thank you.
All right. So is the board okay if I go out to the public for comment?
Yes.
Just ask that you take a seat for a second.
No problem.
All right, so again, this is a public comment period for the Woodbury Common Bosie Line and Company Champagne Bar. Anybody here wishing to speak on that application? Second call for the Woodbury Commons Champagne Bar. Third and final call for the Woodbury Common Champagne Bar. Being nobody rose to speak, and we have no, received no written comments on this application, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So with that, and pretty much all the outstanding issues being, have been taken care of, we do have a draft resolution of approval for us to consider tonight, if the board is okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Again, we'll go to several. We may have to add that. All right, so we have several pages of facts and findings, and we get to our specific conditions. I apologize, our lawyers like to be wordy.
Our lawyer what?
Likes to be wordy.
Oh, it's true.
All right, specific condition number one, all applicable conditions attached to the site plan, special permit, and Architecture Review Board approvals from 1997 to the present for Premium Outlet Partners LP, Chelseaa GCA Realty Partnership LP, CPG Partners LP, also referred to in the same as Woodbury Commons Premium Outlets, and the ethne subsequent amendments thereto, and hereby incorporated into this resolution, are to remain in full force and effect, and this approval is subject to the conditions upon satisfaction of those conditions as if they were set forth at length herein. During construction, safety shall be the sole responsibility of Premium Outlet Partners LP and their contractors with all appropriate safety measures provided. The features shall also be to the satisfaction of the Building Building Department for public safety. All signage shall be in accordance with the previously approved sign plan for Woodbury Commons and approved amendments thereto. A 20-foot wide clearance among permanent structures, buildings, planters, seating, areas, kiosks, et cetera, shall be maintained for emergency service organizations, ESOs, access and passage as demonstrated by the ESO plan provided. The ESO shall be involved with the construction phase to coordinate any temporary rerouting of the ESO access route based on temporary construction obstructions. Utility placements shall be in accordance with the requirements of the Village Water and Sewer Department and prior approvals. Existing drainage and sanitary utility pipes under building, underbuilding shall be removed where possible. If abandonment in place is necessary, they should be removed to the maximum extent practical, captain filled with flowable fill. K-creators similar. Drains and sanitary lines may not be located directly above active water lines. Any areas found to produce ponding shall be addressed by the applicant with additional drainage facilities as determined necessary by the building inspector. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the Village Engineer dated February 16, 2024, to the satisfaction of the Village Engineer subsequent, sorry, submit an updated GLA plan auto-catered in PDF format and GLA tally PDF and Excel format consistent with this approval to the satisfaction of the Village Engineer. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall confirm the as-built area of the proposed kiosk by survey certified by New York State Licensed Land Surveyor submitted to the Building Department. If needed, the GLA plan and tally shall be updated to the satisfaction of the building inspector to reflect the as-built area. It revised, a copy of the revised GLA plan and tally shall be submitted to the Planning Board and Village Engineer. This approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering prior to the issuance of a building permit, proof that a copy of final approved plans has been filed with the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that such filing is not required.
And I have, I know it was late, but I have two more to add to that for the board's consideration. The installation of cooking equipment was talked about, so the installation of cooking equipment that requires an Ansel system and/or hood and duct system is not permitted by this approval. That gets to the issue you were talking about last time. And the applicant shall provide an enforceable waste disposal plan for solid waste handling to the Building Department prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Thank you very much.
Is this okay? You can explain what Ansel is.
Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll offer a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Aye.
Second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome, have a good night.
I'll send you a copy of that tomorrow.
Next item on the agenda, Indig 41 Milville Lane. Anyone here? I went up, my friend. Sorry, you were hiding behind my monitor, I didn't see you. How are you tonight, sir?
Good. So, my name is Yol Xim, I'm here for Indig 41 Milville Lane. We have submitted revised documents addressing the comments from the board from previous meeting. So to recap what we're doing, we have a, building a large addition to the house, which will allow us to enlarge all the dining room, living room area, and the living area will be quite enlarged, more than it was before. We are, we are maintaining the same amount of bedrooms. I know that there was a comment about one bedroom having a closet. The closet shown in that bedroom is a mechanical closet. It's shown in the, in the resubmitted plans, existing mechanical closet. There is the mechanical to the house right now. So.
Hot water heater, boilers, stuff like that?
Yes. So it's not, it's not like a closet for the room. We have revised the colors to be air toned colors, and we did a different view of the renderings, so that's basically what we changed.
I do have a question for you. Are you going to keep the car in the living room? Are you going to keep the car in the living room, or?
I think it's, it's mirroring from the outside, right?
I saw that, I was like, I guess that's a rendering, folks.
It can't be a reflection.
It's like, that's cool.
I was like, that can't be a reflection, that's not a real picture.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
At least he answered the car in the living room question. Kelly?
I have nothing further.
Jim?
Yes. Okay, under the bulk table, the area is, the lot is listed as 1.002 acres, and that is undersized for an RA 2, R 2A zone, which requires a two-acre minimum. This should be determined whether this was something pre-existing or not, when it change, code, the, the zone change. The applicant's plans have been revised to measure the height of the average grade on the, of the paved, open spaces. We defer to the building inspector to review the revised plans to interpret whether this meets the code. The updated ARB, an updated ARB form and renderings should be supplied. There was only two other homes that were, that were supply ranging, that were provided on Milvar Lane, ranging from 52 feet to 161 feet away. There are, the applicant proposes three new dormers and a flat covered porch, and we recommend you consider whether the similarity or dis similarity of criteria of your code. Non-reflective windows are a requirement of your code. We recommend that this becomes a condition of approval. A photograph of the rear of the home was provided, which appears that, that there is no trees, this may be just a rendering, but we'd like to make sure that there's, whatever trees are being removed is designated. The applicant just mentioned about the room, the existing room, the music room that was, it was listed as a music room, but it also had a closet, so we'd like confirmation on that.
And that's what the applicant talked about, they're going to change that to, I mean, it's a mechanical room, so that takes care of it.
It's, it should be on the new plans that we submitted to you, that there's a mechanical room there. The closet is a mechanical closet.
Okay, we, we didn't get the new plans then.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
We submitted to the, to the secretary, two weeks ago.
Six they sent? I think it was March 6th?
Six, March 6th, yes.
No, I, that's, we didn't get that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. We removed the, we, I mean, we changed the setbacks and all that stuff, right? We did. It was together with that package?
Yeah, so here it is, music room, it says, mechanical.
Okay, I see that, okay.
Okay.
Well, that was it, that was the rest of my comments.
What is it?
That was the rest of my comments.
Okay. So, so desire for the board to consider these comments?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the, the site would fall under a pre-existing non-conforming, wouldn't it? It's.
Yeah, I just looked that up to confirm.
Yeah, I was, I think we're probably on the same page looking.
Yeah, the, the building inspector, looking at when this lot was created, it was back in 1971, he will be finding, consistent with his other decisions for properties that were created at that time, that this is legally pre-existing non-conforming as to the lot area.
Okay. All right, just trying to knock off the, the, one by one, so.
Sure.
I will put a, typically I have a finding in there for you. I thought I had already done that, but it was raised by Antoine, so I'll, I'll put in there, I'll confirm with the building inspector tomorrow, but I feel very, very confident that he will agree with that.
Yeah, even, even if it's not, I would imagine his opinion would be, was a pre-existing non-conforming.
He's made that determination for properties that were created that year, previously, so there's.
Okay.
Essentially, he's already made it, but I just want to confirm for this particular lot.
Okay. And then, what was the comment about the trees?
So there are no trees there right now.
You have no trees in the backyard now?
No.
I don't think it does, it's in the front and.
Do we show a picture of this, of the backyard?
I don't have a, it's not in your book. Have the rendering to the back of what.
If you go to the, the bridge preservation view corridor.
Oh, look at you, Evan. Oh, yeah. Thanks, Evan.
Oh, wow, yeah.
There's none. There's none back. All right.
No trees.
Don't got to worry about that then. Okay. Sorry, did we cut you off, Jim? I was just trying to.
No, that's, that's it, yes.
That's it, okay. I was just trying to, as we went through the memo, just took those things off, okay. Does anybody from the board have questions for the applicant before we go out to the public?
No.
Actually, I like it. I like it compared, compared to the comparables they use. I think it's actually a nicer.
Yeah, it's not sharp.
It's a nicer home than.
Sets a better standard.
I think it does too, compared to.
Compared to this.
Compared to that?
Yeah. Yep, I'm good.
Look is good, okay. Just ask you to take a seat for a second while we open up the public hearing. All right, again, this is a public hearing for 41 Milville Lane. Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this application? Don't all get up at once? Going once, 41 Milville Lane, going twice. Third and final call for 41 Milville Lane. No one has reason to speak on this application, and we received no written comments, so I'm going to offer a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There was an issue that, but we took care of with the, with the fifth bedroom, being they're not adding a bedroom, then they're within compliance as far as the moratorium goes, so they don't need a waiver for that. We've got the pre-existing non-conforming, and the only, I guess it's the unfinished basement, but we now include a standard resolution, or not resolution.
Yeah, no condition.
Condition that we're not approving any roughens for the basement, so no roughens would be included. The basement disapproval goes through. All right. Anybody have any other questions, comments, feedbacks, concerns?
No.
Okay. Well, look at that, I happen to have. I haven't. It was just in a, it was in a different, it was in a different, it was in a different tab.
There you go.
So, several pages of facts and findings.
There is a finding on page three, if you could just make that find.
I was only on page two. Tommy, can back me up on that one? All right, so the finding on page three, in connection with this finding, the Planning Board is determined in accordance with Village Code Section 310-13B, 7B, that a requirement of Village Code Section 310-13 risk preservation for the applicant to submit a photo simulation is hereby waived as a structure affected will not be visible from the designated view court. Then we'll get to our specific conditions. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval. Nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for any structure constructed except in conformance with such rendering, and a deviation from such renderings will require further Planning Board review. The color of the addition and trim shall be consistent from the front of the house to the rear of the new addition. No roughen shall be permitted in the basement of the dwelling or the addition. No trees shall be removed for the construction of the addition. All new windows shall be constructed of or coated with non-reflective material or anti-reflection, anti-reflection window film will be applied to any new low-e windows installed. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the Village Engineer dated.
March 15th.
March 15th, 2024, to the satisfaction of the Village Engineer. Revised renderings indicate that both the rear deck and the animal pen will be removed. Said removal shall be accomplished prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and revised the renderings to move the closest.
I'll take that, yeah, I'll take that condition.
We can strike C. Okay. The approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering prior to the issuance of any building permit, proof that a copy of the final approved plans has been filed with the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that such filing is not required. I'll offer a motion.
And I have one more.
Aw, come on.
Sorry. Just because, I know, I know you were on a roll. This applicant, this application is only approved to the extent that the building inspector determines that it complies with the permitted building height according to the Village Code. If it is determined that the building height exceeds what is permitted, the applicant will need to apply to the zoning board for variance. We just couldn't confirm, but I just wanted to make it clear that you're not approving something that is not in accordance with the code.
Right. You understand that condition, right? All right, any questions? So I'll offer a motion to accept the resolution of approval as amended this evening.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, sir.
All good.
Schlomo, 50 Smith Clover Road. Let me close some tabs so I stop getting. Good evening. Don't wait for me, go ahead.
We're back here for the public hearing. My name is David Nimatko, with the architectural firm that prepared the plans for this project. We are up to date, I believe, with most of the comments that were prepared by the engineer. We did provide a layout of the conversion of that existing first-floor laundry mat to an apartment. We provided the plan, the proposed layout for it, and also the proposed layout of the existing second floor, and, and to satisfy the Planning Board's comments. And at this point, we did receive the comments from H2M. I believe there's only a few outstanding items that I was hoping we can work on directly with the subconsultants to, to finalize, so that we can get to a point of conditional final approval.
Okay. I think we could probably work, we can probably work through that.
Thank you.
Does the board have questions for the applicant? Kelly? Jim?
Nothing new, it's what we had previously listed.
Hold on, I was rustling, what was that?
No new comments.
No new comments, okay. Sorry, all right, so I'll just ask you to take a seat for a second, so I can go out to the public. All right, it's a public hearing for 50 Smith Clover Road. Anybody here to speak on the 50 Smith Clover Road application? Second call, 50 Smith Clover Road, anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call for 50 Smith Clover Road. Nobody has risen to speak on this application, and we received no written comments. I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We do have draft resolution of approval for this applicant tonight. There are, I think, just a couple of minor things I think the applicant and H2M can work at, work out prior to plan signing, nothing that's going to drastically change this application. There it is. All right. And they are, aren't exempt, Kelly?
They are.
Are, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right. Page four, the applicant has provided proof that the property has municipal water connection in place on July 30th, 2021, to the Building Department, Water Department, and Village Engineer. On January 17, 2024, the Planning Board determined in consultation with the Village Engineer that the applicant demonstrated there's no increase in use of water associated with this approval of this application, and therefore is exempt from the current moratorium on land development approvals, see local law number five of 2022, exemption number 12. And then we will get into the specific conditions. No building permit shall be issued authorizing the construction or renovation of structures inconsistent with architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviation from such renderings will require further Planning Board review. All door and display windows shall be replaced in kind as noted on, noted on the plans. Any tree clearing permitted by this approval for a construction of this project shall be limited to the time between November 1st and March 31st, so that to mitigate any adverse impacts on roosting, roosting Indiana and northern long-eared bats. Easy for me to say. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain a floodplain development per, permit if necessary. Prior to the signing of the plans by the chairman, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the Village Engineer dated March.
15th, and there's no traffic one, so that can.
March 15th, 2024, to the satisfaction of the Village Engineer. We will strike number six. This approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering prior to the issuance of any building permit, proof that a copy of the final approved plans has been filed with the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that such filing is not required.
And I have one more.
Okay.
And Jim might be able to weigh in on this a little bit more, but prior to the signing of the plans by the chairman, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a replacement landscaped area to replace that being removed to the satisfaction of the Village Engineer. If you remember before, they were moving that little area, and they said that that was going to be replaced, but I guess it hasn't shown up on the plans yet, so. If it hasn't, I missed it, show it, and I can take it out.
We agree.
You agree, you don't, you disagree?
No, we agree that we have to replace that landscaped area, and it's not.
Okay. So then we'll include that, and it'll be to the satisfaction of the Village Engineer. That way it's in a.
So you'll just work with H2M for that, okay? It's a small.
Yeah, it's a little small.
It's not, it's not a really big, I think that, so. All right, so I'll offer a motion to accept the resol.
I second that.
Resolution of approval as modified this evening. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Red pen, still not a red balloon. If anybody wants to know about the red balloon joke, I go back to a South Bloomington Grove Planning Board meeting about two years ago. Next item on the agenda. We'll see you soon, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Next on the agenda, Rushmore Estates.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm George Lithgow with J&amp;G Law. With me is Larry Toro from Civil Tech Engineering. He is the author of the site plan that you see up there now. Basically, what this is, is to use the existing Rushmore Estate without changes and modifications for events such as weddings and birthday parties, charitable activities, things of that nature. We've been through the nature of the proposed activities over the last six months since we first came before you in August. One thing that you asked is that we analyze the full impact of what could take place here. We have done that, the impacts have been addressed, and the parking and water consumption and sewer consumption have analyzed, been analyzed from that perspective. We recognize there is a ward and moratorium. We have made an application for exemption or for the hardship waiver that was submitted to the Village Board last week. One thing I want to emphasize is that the applicant has looked at what's realistic to do in the short term, and it is not going to be more than 20 to 24 events this year. It just is impossible. We've told you how this process would work, one weekend event, perhaps one or two events during the week. You've asked us to look at the maximum allowed by the zoning law. We have done that, but that's only happened once. And the thing that I would point out going forward with the public hearing is, this activity has happened pursuant to a consent agreement with the village for the last two years. So the impacts are not hypothetical. The events have been held, uh, to my knowledge, there have been no complaints, and, uh, we think this is, you know, obviously a good use of this particular property and, uh, with a forward to public comment. I would just like to have Larry point out to you one thing because it's been an issue with the fire department. The parking arrangements are for small events near the building. For larger events that require valet parking, which will be at least those events a hundred and over, there is a valet lot in the back. So the fire department is concerned about emergency access or egress from that lot, and that is something that we think is, uh, probably not something that needs to be addressed. It, it won't be individuals accessing that, it'll be the valets parking there and bringing the, uh, keys back and, you know, then when they deliver the car, they hand over the keys. So having egress from there is, is not something that's going to take place during an event emergency, uh, because the cars have to be brought out. These people will not know where the car is, and even if they did, they won't have the keys. So we, I did talk with Kelly earlier and we're going to try and work through this with the fire district or fire department. I will make the, whatever amendments to the traffic plan are necessary, we'll certainly provide it to you after that, but I don't think that should be an impediment. So Larry may, Larry just not want to talk extensively, I'll give him a couple of minutes.
I mean, I, I'll save Larry's, um, I, I did speak to Chief Burke, um, he did agree next week, we could, I'm waiting for his availability to come back, we'll have a, a separate meeting to discuss the one item that he brought, well, two items, but as of, from all the ESOs, the fire department is the only one that had comments, police department said everything was fine, EMS didn't send us back anything, um, so as far as the whole parking area and the egress, I figured it's best not to get into a back and forth because Chief Burke isn't here tonight, so we'll have a call next week with Chief Burke, Phil, Kelly, myself, maybe one other planning board member, and hash that issue out. But I don't, I don't think it's going to stop us from moving anything else forward right now. I just, I think it's best of use of everybody's time tonight. Hopefully you agree on that one. Questions from the board? We'll start the other end of the day, Phil?
So the, the applicant prepared a detailed traffic and parking management plan, uh, which addressed all of our comments, it's a multi-page document. Uh, I just, you know, want to make sure that in any, uh, approvals that, that document is referenced and it's kept on site so that, uh, in the future, there's, there's no questions about how any of the different size events get managed. And then depending on what fire department, uh, requirement is, that can be added into that document.
Okay.
So, but they've, they've addressed all of our other comments, they've gone through a couple of iterations of that document, and we feel it's, uh, pretty, you know, it's complete and it covers the different size events that would occur there.
Thank you. Questions for Phil? Jim?
I have no comments.
No comments? Kelly?
I have no comments.
Okay. All right, so now we'll open up the public hearing for Rushmore Estates. Anybody wishing to speak on the Rushmore Estates application? Good evening.
Good evening, Maria Hunter. Just a couple of questions for the board. In prior approval, when the B and B was approved, the driveway was supposed to have what I call two side pull-offs in case there are cars going in two different directions. I'm just curious if that was still in place, because it should be with the prior approval, and going forward, I would think that this would be kind of important if someone's leaving and an emergency vehi- emergency vehicle may be going up, and I know things get crazy, been there, done that, so just want to make sure that's okay. And I see that this is a maximum of a hundred and ninety-nine attendees. Does that include having food trucks and events? I just want to be very clear on that, that we're not going to be having that.
As far as the, like, the, the maximum count includes the workers and stuff, or just the amount of people that can be, or if they're going to be like a food truck festival type thing?
A food truck festival, or a, or a outdoor concert type event?
One, one ninety-nine is the max.
One ninety-nine is the max, otherwise they have to get a public assembly permit.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clearly going to be in the.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's regardless of the event.
Perfect. And, um, just as a point of reference, this past summer, everyone knows where my house is on Route thirty-two, everyone knows I'm Hunter Plumbing. Twice, I could hear bands and music playing, and I know where it was coming from, because there's no, it was a direct route, and I just want to make sure that if we're going to be doing outside planning, that they adhere to the timeframes of when music should be played outside. That's, you know, I'm, I'm just requesting that that be looked at and that be very clearly adhered to, because I don't want to be calling the police, I don't want to go up there, I don't want to be a nuisance, but as we know, there is a, there is a noise ordinance in town, village, whatever the heck you want to call us, but, um, I would just want that to be very clear to the applicants and the attorney that they adhere to this.
And there are noise requirements in this section of the code specifically for this type of venue.
Yep.
So, I mean, you've been on this side, so you know this board can only put the restrictions in, it would be up to, unfortunately, it would be up to the building department to, and then as usual.
I know.
It would be up for yearly review if complaints are received, and then this board can take appropriate actions.
I, I know the attorney, and I know, know him very well, so I just want to make sure that when this goes through, that all the, that the, Mr. Pulver is doing right by everybody, not just a certain few.
We've dealt with this issue with other, um, special events or things where there are constraints on it, like with traffic or noise, and a complaint has to be a formal written complaint.
I know.
With the building inspector to do any of the next mess.
Trust me, I know.
It can't be verbal, just, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Not just for you, but for everybody who's concerned about.
Oh, I, I very know, I know very well what the, that there's a complaint form and that people have to be realized to complete that, and, um, also when the winery down the road, when they had their public events, like you said, that you'll have a, a safety plan that is going to be given to the police department so that they can review it for emergency services, because they're the ones who are going to have control over an issue, because I know that was part of what the winery had to do when they had large events with music, so.
Well, this one, they, um, he had, Lieutenant Phillips reviewed the traffic management plan and the event plan, and he took no exception to what was provided to the police department.
Perfect.
So it had been referred to them and they did comment back on it. The only one we didn't get back from was EMS.
Which I'm surprised at.
We asked him, we actually asked him a couple of times.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify my response so that it was clear for the record. Um, the, when the number of attendees exceeds a hundred and ninety-nine is when it requires a public assembly permit, but the calculation for the event venue, what the code provides is that it's a hundred and ninety-nine exclusive of staff members or employees, so that's additional, it's the attendees. I just wanted to make it clear, I thought maybe.
No problem.
Might, might be misread if somebody read it, so.
No, it says a hundred, it says a hundred and ninety-nine attendees, so that's, that's good for me.
Everybody gets a sticker on their way in. I just, give us, give me one second, and we'll get right back. Any other comments on Rushmore? Going once, going twice? You, public comment, or you just responding to? George?
I have a few responses.
Okay.
One is, uh, Mr. Pulver has offered to give his cell phone number to the building inspector and anyone else. If there is a complaint, he will address it immediately, and I think I will bring that to his attention.
Okay.
Uh, second thing is, you do have a, uh, I believe you have a response from the ambulance corps, I'm not sure if that's what you meant, but the police department, uh, they basically said, we agree with the police department, as I recall.
I saw police, I saw fire, I may have missed the one from ambulance, but.
I think they were attached.
Maybe they were in line. I, I know Lieutenant Phillips and Chief Burke's, maybe I, the ambulance I may have missed just because they said, they take no exception.
They said me too.
No exception, so. If I did, I'm sorry, I'm not doing it on purpose. All right, so I did third call, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So we can't take action, but we can authorize the drafting of a resolution of approval, and we'll just have to wait until the applicant goes through the hardship waiver process with.
Yep. The board trustees.
So I will offer a motion to draft a draft resolution of approval.
Second.
Second. Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you back after the, uh, village board, have a good one.
Thank you very much.
All right, that concludes our public hearing portion of the night.
Have a good night.
Central Valley Property Management.
Good evening, Gary, how are you?
Good, thank you, I'll get the little.
I feel that there is. It's like I knew we had a newer one.
Oh, you have?
I do, you can save the easel, you can save yourself with the easel.
I don't need to save myself from.
Unless, this hasn't changed, right? This is the one we're working from still?
Yes, that's correct, there's only one change to that, so.
Just don't, just don't take your Sharpie out and start drawing on the boards.
Okay, good evening, I'm Jerry Cessano with HVRS, we're here for Central Valley Property Management. Uh, we were in front of the board November first and got approval for, uh, signs to be added to the building. The application at that time, we only showed the state Route thirty-two elevation, uh, the parking lot elevation is the lower and below, it's identical to the front, but obviously, space one oh six is on the right on top and on the left on the bottom, because it's a mirror image. The signs on the parking lot side will match the signs that we got approved for the Route thirty-two side. Uh, there was a comment letter, uh, that was received yesterday, and there were two comments on there that we have to address. The one is, on item number two listed above, all tenants' signs shall be externally illuminated. They wanted us to confirm the hours that the lights will be on. The code allows those lights to be on from dusk and must be shut off before midnight.
Midnight, yeah.
So the plan I have here indicates that the lights will be shut off by midnight for those signs. The other one was a recommendation, um, I think it was, um, something to the board, how you want to address, um, the, each individual tenant will have to apply for their building, for their building permit or sign permits, and they want to know how we could memorialize that, is what the, uh.
Yeah.
The comment was, so I don't, I don't have a way to document that on the map, if there is some suggested, um, verbiage. I do have on that, that they have to apply for their own building permit, I think that was number six, or five or six on that list. Could that be summarized into resolution? Any additional signs must appear?
I'm just trying to pull up the memo because I'm not sure which comment he's referring to.
It was your, it was the following comments. Comment.
Yeah, they could be.
D, applicant advised that signs are proposed for, oh, I'm sorry, we took care of that one, so it was C, and that was regarding discuss with the council and memorialize the approach.
Yeah.
In the action you take, so that is about applying for the permits in the.
Yeah, um, we can certainly put that in the resolution, um, it, it may also be helpful for somebody to put it in the ten- a tenant's lease as like a rider or something so that they know, I don't.
Yes, actually, so our tenants, uh, their leases say that any construction or alterations to the building, we have to approve first, and, uh, once we have this approved document, uh, we're going to send it out as an addendum to their leases, because they're all asking when they can put signs up, and I can't allow them to make an application for new signs until this is approved, and I think it's, um, yeah, number four, each tenant shall, uh, apply and obtain a sign permit, the village will vary. And again, just like the, uh, indicates there, it all has to be per the code three ten dash thirty, uh, E has all the information on how the sign has to be, uh, you have the two type faces exclusive of the logo for, uh, that maximum four colors, um, so they understand that. The sign board is going to be restricted to two foot by eight foot, which is sixteen square feet, the zone actually allows twenty square feet, but the way the configuration of the storefronts are, we think it's a little better holding it at the eight foot line.
And this is the sign board under the gooseneck lighting, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
These are the sign boards under the gooseneck lighting.
So then, I guess the intention is that each, so I guess this board has done this one of two ways, right? With strip malls, we've either come up with a signage package that, so there's uniformity between the signs, which most of the places are, I mean, there's some deviations of that, or then there's, um, every, there's like, I don't want to call it a free-for-all, but every storefront gets its own sign that confl- conforms with three ten thirty. So you're looking at each store is going to just come in, Hudson's, Costa and Son, they're going to come in and.
And they're going to apply for this sign, it's going to have to meet the older code requirements, and, uh, you know, they, they could have up to the four colors, they could have, uh, three, two types say, uh, faces exclusive of their logo, so let's say Hudson, for instance, their logo is an ice cream cone, ice cream cone probably has six different colors of sprinkles on it, you know, so that's obviously not a color of the sign, that's where that, your sign, uh, uh, code kind of gives that discretion, you know, you could have, let's say Nike has a red swoop, that's what they use, so if somebody comes in for Verizon, actually, we have one tenant that is Remax, and Remax has a multicolored, uh, hot air balloon as part of their logo, that might be four, I don't know if there's three or four colors in that by itself, and then they'll say red, in red, it'll say Remax, just like you see.
Normally, uh, we accept corporate logos.
National branding.
National branding.
We've done it with, with Chili's and other restaurant chains.
My concern.
So I think it's all going to be consistent with the code, and the building inspector has that, has to approve every sign before it goes out, and he'll have the current code to use as, uh, as a guide to make sure it's consistent.
But I think one of the, while three, there's another piece of the code too, that signs should be designed to be compatible with surroundings and should be appropriate to architectural character of the building on or around with they are located. So you designed and built a beautiful building, um, and when you first came in, um, it was black and gold, if I remember correctly. You had the black panel and you had like gold, it's a signage, and I think the board was under the impression that that's what those signs would be. So now, you're going to have this beautiful building that you guys spent a lot of time on to work into the downtown, tablet area, sorry, correct myself there, and you're going to have potentially six different.
Well, that was my concern, I mean, if each sign is allowed four colors, you could potentially have twenty-four different colors.
Right, where you, where if you look.
On the outside of the building.
Where if you look across the street where Bagel World is, they're supposed to, I think it's blue and white, I know. Bagel, the Bagel World store had to come in to get an exception for theirs. Same thing with the pharmacy, they're supposed to be blue and white, I know there's a violation in there right now. This is where I struggle.
In the same plaza you're speaking of across the way is also, um, Valsgate, I think it's green and white.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know how he got this, it's not supposed to be there. That, that, that strip mall supposed, that strip mall's supposed to be blue and white.
That's his branding color, so, you know, same thing with Bagel World, their branding colors.
But Bagel World got a, Bagel World came in for.
They got a specific approval for that one.
For approval for that one. The Valsgate guy never came in, so I, I honestly don't know how his sign got there.
I don't manage that property.
No, I know, you know.
Off with the, with the, uh, bagel store.
I, I, I just, I'm struggling with the, with the six signs and what Tommy brings up, six times four.
Twenty-four different colors you could potentially have.
I don't know what we do about that.
Right, so at this point. Oh, yeah, like, like.
Can we have a palette?
Like what you're saying.
With acceptable colors?
Yeah, maybe we could limit it to eight colors or.
And then they can have various combinations of those colors.
So.
Exclusive of national branding. Exclusive of national branding.
Well, and here's, here's just one quick thing. So I know it was said that this was approved previously. That actually was just authorizing the drafting of a resolution, so an approval wasn't granted. But I just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same, they're, they're proposing four signs in this application, unless I'm incorrect.
We're proposing 12 signs.
Okay, so, well, eight. I'll just double it. The Acosta and, well, the ones that have specific, not, there.
That's what I did not want to do. That's what we tried to make. So is that what you're speaking of is the original sign that we had? We showed you what those signs might look like.
Right.
But if Easy Drive leaves, then I need to come back to the planning board to remove Easy Drive's sign and get a new one? We don't, we, we want to try to avoid that.
No, but, but.
We want to have a standard that the signs all need.
And that's typically what this board has done in, in, I hate to call it a strip mall. Strip malls before is where they've come up with a signage package where blue and white, purple and white, whatever, yellow and black, pick your colors. Those are the approved colors in the, in the strip mall. And then if that's what the sign conforms to that, then they never see us again. They get their sign and they go about their merry way. Whereas if, again, I'll pick up, not picking on Bagel World, but we'll use Bagel World or we can use the bank too, because they are a different shade of blue. Yeah, they came in, they said, hey, listen, blue and white is the approved in this mall. We want this because this is our brand, this is our national logo. I don't think the board took exception to it, but it was, it was still run through the board because that mall had an acceptable palette. You can expand it out to the commons. The commons has got a complete sign package, right? There's uniformity throughout the stores down there. They can pick from certain colors, certain designs, as long as it fits, they never have to see us again. So I think.
If he can present some colors to you and see if that would.
Because you, you have a really nice building. You do. It's probably one of the nicer buildings in, in Woodbury. You guys spent a lot of time on it to, I, I think the whole, they should be designed to, to fit with the building, kind of really applies here.
So I have, let's just see, we have tenants with their own, so we have black, blue, red. We're going to get rid of the ice cream cone because I don't want, you know, purple in and everything else, but. So let's say we say primary colors. I mean, I don't want to exclude pink because, you know.
And, and your tech. And you could, you could designate those colors. And if your, if your applicant wants something else other than those colors, then they're more than, they're more than, will, more than allowed to come in front of this board and say, hey, listen, I want a 39 color sign because I'm, or 31 color sign because I'm Baskin Robbins. I want every color of my, my ice cream up there. They can come in front of the board and, and ask for it, but if, you know.
If it's part of the logo, they won't have to. Are we agreeing on that?
Well, yeah, as long as we can define it's their logo. As long as they can prove it's their logo. We went through this with, like, the church down the street. They had a, a multi-color sign. They, it was a registered logo for them. They, whatever they had to do to make it there, they were able to say, hey, listen, here's the paperwork, this is our logo, it's our official logo. You know, you can't just, you know, take six giraffes and a penguin and be like, that's my logo. I know it's an odd example, but I'm just, you know.
Yeah, but something like the Remax or something like that.
That's a national brand. I mean, that's not a big deal. No one's going to.
He's going to want to add the blue, you know? I think the blue is four colors, right? It's red, white, blue.
Yeah. I think it's only three. I don't think it's four. I think it's red, white and blue. I think it's, yeah.
So, you know, they're going to add that Acosta, you know? The, we have another one there. It's PWI, which he's got a white lettering in the last game, so, you know. In his sign, I'm sure he'll have to come up with a color that looks good. So I would say six primary colors. I'll come up with six of them.
And then those, those will be the default colors. And if they wanted something different.
Well, you know, they'll make it easier on you with your, with your potential tenants too, because as long as they fit within those six colors, they don't got to come in front of us.
Well, no, each sign can only have four.
Four colors.
Well, but, but, but as long as they choose it out of those six.
Out of the, out of the six colors, they choose four that are there, then they don't have to come back.
They don't have to come in front of us.
If they want to choose one of the colors that's not there, then they have to come back.
And they come say hello.
They want short twos and we didn't approve short twos.
Exactly. I'm not going to.
Or more colors.
There's only five primary colors.
So I just want to, I want to try to make this as simple as possible.
And trust us, so do we. As we want to too. We don't want to ruin the look of the building either. We don't want to turn it into a certain.
Like I said, like, you know, I don't want to see 24 different colors up there, especially on the 32 side.
Right.
It's because it's a pretty building.
It is. It's a really good looking building.
It is.
I think the black and gold would be great.
I thought the black and gold would be fantastic, but.
No one's told you.
No, he's all goes like that. Fair enough.
Actually, we had Century 21 that would have been black and gold. And you guys would have been.
You got an empty storefront. You get them in there, can't you? Got to still got an empty storefront. Can't you get them in there?
No, we haven't really saved anything.
So how do we do, what do you see? Yeah.
So I, I think that based on this discussion, we have a little bit more direction of where this is headed. So I think we need to know what those colors are and, like, maybe you can just, I mean, like, just give you.
Yeah, pretty much.
We're going to go with blue, red, black, I would say green, yeah.
White?
Yeah.
White's not a color.
But if the sign board is white, obviously that's fine, right? Sorry? Yeah, so it's.
Well, the, the three primary colors are red, yellow, blue.
Yellow I missed.
Yellow, yeah.
Yellow I missed.
Come on, nobody remembers Roy G. Biff?
Yeah, right? Indigo and violet. No, I'm just kidding. Those are not primary.
Maybe that would be colors. Even if we had six different signs, we probably wouldn't get a white for colors, right?
So we've got blue, red, black, green, yellow, and I'm putting white, so that it's clear in case there's like.
White is not a color, so we're not including white, right?
Well, no, I'm, I'm going to list it so that if somebody wanted some part of it white.
Okay.
Unless you want.
We're just not going to count it against the green.
Yeah, I just want it.
Yellow. Still only have five. What other color would there be? Gold. Gold. There you go.
I didn't hear it. Shh.
How do we miss gold?
Gold, okay.
All right, so we'll agree to that. That's not a problem.
Okay. You okay with that, Kelly?
Yes, I think, so what you did last time was you authorized the drafting of a resolution. I didn't prepare a resolution for you the last time because there were questions regarding the rear of the building, which are now incorporated, so that clears that up. There was a question of how you wanted to proceed, like, like this with the colors or how we were going to do that, so that clears that up. I had a question of how soon the signs that are currently there, say you get this approval and it takes two months for the plans to be signed. How soon after the plans are signed, are they going to be required to comply with this? So if somebody puts up a hot pink sign, or say there's a hot pink sign up there with the giraffes and whatever. How soon is that going to be required to come down to comply with this?
There are no signs in that building and we will not have any tenant apply for a building permit until it's approved.
Okay, so then, would it be, would it be okay to say that if there are any signs that don't comply, give them 90 days? There shouldn't be any. But I just want to cover it in case somebody staples one.
Other than the window signs.
Window signs, we'll get to in just a second.
Okay.
90-day removal.
There's a lot of different shades of blue. So there are technical definitions for different types of blue or green. Not just paint chips, but there's a Pantone scale, is that it?
There's different hues.
Yeah, I think we have to define the color according to a standard color scheme.
I'm not going to be able to do that now. I have no clue.
No, no, I mean, I wouldn't ask you to do that like right now because I still need to draft something. But maybe if, if you could submit like a printout on a piece of paper saying, these are the colors, and have like a little color block of it, and then that can get attached to the resolution, and then that narrows it down.
So the only issue I would have with that is if Remax has got a certain navy blue and another company has a royal blue.
Again, national, national logo.
They would have approval of the royal blue versus the navy blue, I think.
No, if that's a national logo, that's.
Okay, so he's, tell, pretend he's giving an example of somebody without a natural, a national logo. It's, it's my company and his company. Okay, shh, you don't have a national logo.
My company has a red logo.
Okay, and mine has blue and gold.
And our red is a deep red color. So if somebody had a, a different red, I don't know how I could police that.
I feel like we've talked about this before with shades, because this came up somewhere else too.
No, you did talk about this. Give me a minute.
Came up with the shades of cream.
But we still talked about shades and what we wanted to do about shades.
Yeah, was that a house?
No, it was a sign, it was a sign you were talking, I think it was down at Woodbury Center.
So maybe if somebody did like a shade, like, you know, they can do like light blue to dark blue, that would not be acceptable, right?
Like a range almost. I just can't remember.
I just don't know how I could police that and have the building inspector to confirm that that is a shade of blue that we predetermined would be acceptable.
So I'd have to think about that and try and come up with something for the resolution for everybody to consider. I know we, I, I remember that conversation and I am trying to pick what application it was for and I can't come up with it.
I, I remember sitting up here going, well, my God, we're talking about.
And it was shades of blue, I think.
I think it was shades of blue.
Whatever, green, you know, dark green and light green.
But, so, all right, so I'll figure that out.
Sure, we'll send you something before and, I mean, and you can, if there's comments, we can discuss it.
And then, next was the suite numbers. They're going to go back to the location that they were on the approved plans. That was a question.
No, they're going to say any inactive panel on each door would need to be located to.
But does each door have the same inactive panel?
Yes.
So they'll be, they'll be uniform across the front and rear?
Yes, it's always on every elevation, the right-hand, the right-hand door is active, the, the left-hand door is inactive.
Okay, so at least they'll be, they'll be uniform across, okay. I think that was more of the concern, that they'll just be uniform across the building.
And you don't want an active panel in case they happen to prop it open.
And then he can't see it, yeah.
And then the window signs, that was the other issue, was that there, there's a possibility if somebody goes in with, whatever, the, the Easy Drive sign, say they put the Easy Drive sign up where the signs all are set to go, and then they put that same sign in the window underneath. I mean, it looks kind of silly, but are they going to take this?
I don't think they'll do that, but the issue is, is that we're just saying, again, per the code, any store, anywhere in the Village of Woodbury is allowed to have window decals. And, and yours, and your chart that is 301011, which is a chart that has all the zonings.
Yeah.
We're the HB zone, and they're allowed to have up to 20% of the window area.
Yeah.
Covered with a sign and it's not required, does not require a building permit. It's one of the only signs that, there's a few, but it's an exempt sign in your code that does not require a building permit.
I, I, I'm aware of the provision. I just know that it came up. I mean, there's other things that.
You know, as long as it doesn't exceed 20%, they're within requirements everywhere in town. You know, 20%, most of them are, I'll tell you that I know for a fact, except for these suites in the middle where they have much more glass. But most things are very similar. And if they fill the entire top panel, it's still going to be like 16% of their glass area. So that's what you see now. And then sometimes they put, well, that's the other thing. Sometimes they put the chart in the window when they're open or closed, you know, does that come up to it? So the top panel at 16% of most of the glass allows them to put something else on the door.
Neon signs.
Neon signs have to come here for approval per your requirement, okay? And there are, and I'm just a property manager, there is neon signs. I told Michael about it. My old mate does do what they need to do because I've asked him to take it down.
Okay.
I had to go the weekend and take his pendant signs down because he had 30 days to take it down. It was 40 days later.
Seems to be recurring problem with particular.
So there's no issue with that, but I know what he, but you got to understand what he's saying. The new, the new place right next door, the sandwich shop, has neon signs in there. How come they're not picking on them? I said, I don't know if they're picking on that. I don't think they're picking on you.
I'm, I'm not going to disagree with you on that one, so.
So, you know, so yeah, absolutely, that has to be made to code. I have no, I don't, as a property manager, I have no authority. I can't go and take it down.
No, I know. No, I know. And I think.
I was just raising it as it was an issue that was raised.
I think with the window signing, it's a poorly, it's a poorly written definition.
I didn't write it. I might have written it.
No, I know.
Yeah, so.
I think I did write it, but a very long time ago, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, I have no problem with that.
It was me. Oh, my gosh, it was me. I am sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, it's, I even said this is poor. I'm sorry. Okay.
All right.
That was the only other comment that I had on this one because I really wasn't sure.
As long as they stay within the 20%, right?
Yeah, there's nothing really, right now, with the definition of window signs, there's nothing that can be done. Under the 20%. Okay. Any other questions, comments, feedback? Emotional outbursts on this one? No?
Nope.
All right, so I'll offer a motion to have council alter office, draft a resolution approval consistent with discussion this evening.
Second.
Second. Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, guys.
You too. Take care.
Thank you.
Now. One second. Get yourself ready. You can come up. You got the next three, right? You have the next three of you, right? Pine Ridge.
I have the next three. Actually, if it's a small request I could make of the board, I have one of my colleagues here who would be willing to help out with any discussions that are required for the ARB for Skyline Drive. So would it be okay if we switched eight and seven, since I'm the same?
That's fine. Just wait for my one colleague to come back from.
Sure, no problem.
No. Oh, that colleague.
Yes.
I was like, no, he's not. We're waiting, yeah.
If you want to go with.
Right. You need the Jeopardy theme.
Oh, yeah? All right, we're at number six. We're doing good. We're doing good.
I know Pine Hill's going to take a long time.
By the way, thank you to the board for accommodating me last month. I had to skip the February meeting, but you put me on for March. I appreciate that.
How dare you go away?
Yes. That's what everybody says.
Pine Hill, there's nothing to bring up. All right, Tommy, we're not waiting on you or anything. No shame.
I mean, it was so long. Beverly was falling asleep, waiting for you.
Beverly's taking her maps and going home.
Sorry about that, everybody.
That's all right, my friend. All right, Pine Ridge.
Go ahead.
So I believe you received a letter from Pine Ridge Estates. It's dated March 12th, 2024. I think it was addressed incorrectly, but it was, I think, supposed to be addressed to the chairman of the board. I mean, in a nutshell, it seems as though they've kind of exhausted themselves in court financially, according to the letter here. And that they have every intention of continuing the project. I think they just need a little more time to regroup themselves. So they're asking for another extension from this board as a result of that. That's pretty much the summary of what the letter states. Whatever the board would be willing to consider tonight, I'm sure the applicant will be grateful. I have really nothing else to opine on as it relates to this matter.
You think if we did another six months, that'd give them enough time to maybe get something together and?
I, I think they would, I think one year, and I think after that, then this board should certainly have some issue with the applicant.
Yeah, we're going to go on probably a third. I know you're tied up in court for a while, but this is, I think, going to be the third extension.
I didn't, I mean, I, I spoke to the applicant tonight. I didn't realize how much they actually spent while they were in court. So they are in a spot right now where they just need to kind of regroup. And I think with the interest rates that have climbed and everything else, it's not helped everything. So financially, they're just struggling a little bit, a little bit to get back on their feet.
How's the board feel with the one year?
Think three, right, Kelly?
At least. I, I was going to put together a timeline for the board for the next time. It's before you anyway, so that you knew the history of the project.
I know this is at least the second extension after they're out of court, but they were in court for a considerable, years, a considerable.
It's the second after court.
This is after court, after they won their case and got with everything.
Yeah, I, I feel like as though.
Won your extensions?
Yeah.
I feel like the first one I made with the board was back in 2023. So they, I think they had just kind of finished court somewhere around that time period.
Twenty twenty-two to twenty.
This would be, this would be, I think, our second out of court, is my guess.
I mean, if, listen, it's really, it's not any skin off the.
Yeah, I'll go.
And then if, if they come back in early year and then, then we can go and be like, you're not really.
You're not making an effort.
Right.
Yeah, one year, I'm okay.
So that would be March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So is there, I'll offer a motion to offer an extension for March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Second questions? All in favor? You said you wanted to do all mine next, right?
Please, yes. I'm sorry, I referred to it as Skyline because of Skyline Drive.
Of, uh, around November, probably the last submission for that?
I believe the beginning of November, we made a submission, yes.
Just making sure I pull up the right one. All right, go ahead.
Um, is it possible that you could bring up the plans on us?
Ah, no, apparently it's not.
So these are the architectural plans. I think the site plan would probably be a little bit more useful. And that would probably, if, if I can see the Windows Explorer file, I'll tell you what, what it's called. That's it right there.
I'm guessing it's the one you named SP.
I think so. Yeah, OP, that's my OP for Skyline Drive, yeah.
Any particular sheet you want?
Uh, let's go to the site plan sheet. I believe that's probably like number three.
I think it's four.
Four, okay. Yeah, slope analysis is three. And maybe zoom out so we can take a look at the zoning bulk table if needed. Uh, that's the grading plan, so go, go backwards just one sheet.
That one?
Yep, there we go. And maybe scroll up just a little, yeah, or zoom out a little bit more. Well, that, that's fine for now because this is the area we need to actually focus on, which is actually, I think we need to focus more on the driveway and its connection to to Elmwood. So, um, so we had received comments from the, the planning board engineer. And maybe, actually, let me get the file.
Are you talking about the access issue?
Yes.
Do you want me to address the access issue?
It would be wonderful if you could, if you could.
Awesome. Let me just take over. So previously, when this application received, they received two variances from the ZBA way back when. And that was to construct the house in a completely different location. So if you went down and over, it was over at the top of the hill and it was actually coming partially down Old Skyline Drive. They received a two ADA variance and a front yard setback variance. They are coming out here and if you see a little diagonal line to the left of the driveway, right, right where it comes off. So they have merged a little lot. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get up and point.
I can do it for you. I know.
They can't see that.
That line right there.
Yeah, you gotta do it from, you gotta do it, turn around.
You gotta turn around, do it.
Oh. I'm sorry, that makes sense, yes.
So they.
This line right there.
Okay.
So, um, that's actually, to the right of that is actually the village's right of way. I confirmed that with Rob Blyant. So by putting the driveway in this location, they don't need a two ADA variance. The prior iteration of this had it, you know, swinging out and then again, they would need it. But they have squeezed it into the one area, as recommended actually, so that they don't need a two ADA variance. The other issue, since I've got the floor, so access is no longer a problem. This is how they can access it with no future variances. The house where it's shown on this plan, if you scroll down a little bit. Yep, is setback only thirty-three feet. So the front yard setback variance that they received was specifically tied to the plan when the house was located on the other side. So the applicant either needs to push that back another seven feet or get a variance because the, where the front yard is, is it's along that prop, it's along the parallel property line, so right up where the driveway was and then along the length of behind these houses there. So I did talk to them about that. They know that that's an issue. I don't know if they're gonna address it by going to the ZBA or if they're gonna address it by moving the house. And I'm just gonna keep going. So I had a couple more comments, so hopefully I'm, I'm taking all the gems because I see a lot of highlighting.
My thunder, so I don't know.
There does need to be an updated entity disclosure form, so the owner of the property is all mine of Orange. But what was provided to you is high view of Orange, so I think there was probably just a typo somewhere and that needs to be corrected. And after this, I think H2M and I need to coordinate with the building inspector to determine whether the required lot width and the required lot frontage, if those are legally pre-existing non-conforming conditions. If they are, then they don't need a variance, obviously, and if they're not, then they would need a variance for those. Hold on. Oh, I requested that the applicant provide a copy of the drainage easement. Mr. Green provided that to me today, so you don't need to worry about that. And this application's a type two action. And I think I covered like a lot in a short period of time.
So I guess with the location of the house, are you able to move it seven feet?
I think I can do it. It's, it's a little steep back there, but I think I can grade that out. I think it makes more sense to move the house back seven feet than go to the ZBA if we can make it conform that way.
Pillars, can't you just put pillars?
I would be willing to. Seriously. Yeah, no, we'll, we'll look, we'll look to move the house back.
I just, this way, either we know we need to refer you or we can just.
Let, let me see if I can make the engineering work. If I can make it work, then we'll do that. If not, we'll be back before the board and we'll ask for a referral.
Okay.
You could also just give the referral just in case so they don't have to come back.
We've done that in the past, true. Yes, you're right.
Because I don't know how the building inspector is just gonna come down, so that's the only reason I say it.
So we, we've, I know we've done that in the past, any and all variances that may be required.
And now I'll turn the floor over to others.
The gem?
Well, I'm not gonna repeat the variances that Kelly had just mentioned, so. So I'll, I'll skip that section and also the easement, the drainage easement was provided today. Would like to review that with village attorney. The property ranges greater than eight hundred feet above mean sea level, triggering your review under ridge preservation. The code requires the applicant to consider every attempt to limit the cutting and removal of trees. We, the board may wish to consider where a tree survey identifies those, those trees at eight inches or greater. Would, would, that would ultimately be removed due to this development. And this is just a minor thing. There's some rendering inconsistencies on, between the form and, and the colors, the materials that are shown. Non-reflective windows are required by the code, recommend that as a condition of any action you may take. Again, as mentioned, the applicant should revise ARB materials for consistency. Photos of homes two hundred feet to point six miles away from the subject home where supply, where, where not provided. Comparison homes within three hundred feet of the subject property. The applicant should provide photos of homes closer to the application for you to review and whether it's similar or dissimilar criteria is met. And really, that's it.
All right.
Yeah, so the, the reason for the dissimilarity, usually when I send an applicant a form to sign, they sign it, send it back to me for an application. I don't normally check it. This particular applicant decided to cross out the original materials that we had listed on the application and and, you know, re-list them. I spoke to them and I guess this is because they were having a hard time at the time with supply chain shortages of finding the other ones. So I never checked it. You follow what I'm saying? I got this form afterwards. I actually got the building materials from them. The building materials that I have there for the board to review match what's there. They do not match, you follow what I'm saying, what I have on my plans? So there just was some miscommunication there between me and the applicant, which is why there's a dissimilarity, but we can easily fix that and make sure that, you know, the application meets whatever's shown on, on, at least my plans and reports are matching whatever's on that application right there. I actually have colors for the board, though, that are consistent with what's written there, if you'd like to take a look at that.
Handwritten in?
I'm sorry, say that again?
About what's handwritten in?
What's handwritten in, correct, yes. So for everybody's ease of viewing, I'll have a tab over there. And then I highlight this. So that's your stone fascia. This, this is your shingles and this is your siding. I think it's worth getting your input tonight that if those colors are acceptable, then I know for sure I can make sure that we have consistency between the.
I think the problem is gonna be is we don't have the other half of the ARB that we need, which would be the comparisons.
Sure.
It's gonna be hard to say, while these colors look now, when we look at it compared to what's in the three hundred foot.
Sure, understood, yes.
Maybe rendering with the colors.
Is typically what's done.
We can do that, yeah, we can do that.
So if you do the rendering with the colors and then it's three hundred feet from the property lines, so that's, would be your pool of houses to pick from.
Is there a minimum or maximum number the board is? I think the colors are fairly standard and neutral, I would say that.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing. It's just like I said, you know, it's just hard to say without seeing what's.
Understood and, and agreed.
Uh, this is the stone.
The shingles like a charcoal glade, right?
Crossouts on the application, square footage hasn't been reduced to twenty-seven.
It is. It's, that's, that's correct, twenty-seven seventy.
I mean, without seeing
There's not much we could.
Not much, but I mean, overall, just from looking at the design, I don't live up there, so I don't hold the house up there. I haven't taken a ride up there.
Neither have I, to be honest.
I go up there every day.
You probably have more feedback.
I have probably more feedback, so.
You'd wanna wait to see the color, you wanna wait to see what the, the colors and.
Then what comparison buildings are you?
Well, that's up to him. He's got three hundred feet from the property lines to pick, so.
Yeah, comparisons and colored rendering.
There's quite a mix of colors up there right now.
Okay. Now, as far as the ZBA, do you want the referral to the ZBA or do you wanna try to do the engineering? If the engineering doesn't work, do you wanna?
Well, if there's no harm in getting a referral, so that it's in place, we'll take it. And then we can always send them a letter saying that it's not required anymore if we can make the engineering work.
So I'll offer a motion to have, and H2M draft a letter for referral for any and all variances that maybe.
Second.
Second. Any question?
All in favor?
Aye.
And as far as the ARB goes, there's not much we can do on that until we see the.
Do you guys wanna take a look at the sightline profiles or anything like that, just to, you know, cover what we can tonight? Um, I mean, it seems as though if I can take care of these inconsistencies and make a resubmit, we're probably as close as ever on this particular application, hopefully to scheduling a public hearing if required and maybe moving the application along.
Oh, we would need the ARB stuff.
Of course.
The public hearing.
Us presuming all that is submitted and once we get through that part, that the board's satisfied with it.
If there are any trees that need to be disturbed, then you have the seasonal constraints for the bats.
Yes, we, we, we obviously won't make that limitation, so if that's the case, we'll have to wait till November for cutting. Or we'll have to do an independent bat study, submit it to the DEC, get an approval, provide that to the village and then be able to cut out of season.
Do you know how much clearing you're gonna have, are you?
I mean, I've, if you take a look at this, I've, I've done everything, I mean, look, we've gone from two lots to one lot. I've reduced the driveway significantly. I've only created a driveway length that's necessary to get the house to the location that we have it in. Um, I've done my best with the grading plan to limit disturbance. We've done everything to minimize the footprint or the limit, limitation of the environmental disturbance footprint on this plan as possible. I mean, that being said, applicants jumped through a lot of hoops on this particular project. If the board would be willing to waive the, the, the tree location plan, we would be very grateful for that. We would also be willing to work with the board in terms of establishing, you know, the actual limits of disturbance that are shown in the erosion sentiment control plan. Those can be accurately marked in the field of construction, orange construction fencing, so that everybody knows where the limits of clearing is in the field.
I think that would be the bigger thing, right? To limit the, how far they're gonna disturb for the construction, I think, more than, because you know they have to do work, right?
Yeah, they're gonna have to clear.
Clear it out. It's just how far are they gonna go on either side to clear that all out.
If you go to the erosion sentiment control plan, maybe we can take a look at what the limits of disturbance is, which would be the other direction now.
I wondered to see if you were paying attention.
That's okay. I mean, if you wanna stop there also for a second, that's, well, there you go. There's, there's my, my limits of clearing. In reality, I would probably, if you could scroll down just a little bit more. I, I mean, this is not realistic right here. I'm, I would probably actually just probably square that off, but I think after that, and we would definitely need to get at least fifteen, twenty feet away from the house from a constructibility standpoint. But other than that, we would be able to maintain roughly that, that limits of disturbance is shown there.
Do you wanna, do you wanna have mistaken or? Oh, yeah?
Yeah, go ahead.
I did two site visits there and in the back of the house, I'm surprised you, you tried to put the house that far back. When I went to walk there, I went up Seab Street, which is next to that, and there were signs called Open Space Institute.
Mm-hmm.
And a trail that goes along the tops of mountain there to walk with. The path.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to see where that path is. Somewhere in the back of the house. It goes along the whole mountain, the path, the walking path. So I'd like to see how close it is to your house. Now you said you may put that house seventeen, closer to the path, back?
That would be correct, if that's a direction.
It's called Open Space Institute to Walk. I'd like to see where that.
Open, Open Space bought the property behind this, so they own up to the road bed that's there.
I wanna see where that path is. I mean, it's.
It's in the road bed.
It's called the Yellow Heart Trail.
Yeah, if, see that.
It's all the way back. It would, it would have to be on.
Like, no, nobody can see it up there.
It would have to be on the, this side of the, half of the road, so it would be back here someplace. This is our property line right there.
Sorry.
I think it's a point of state that way, where the house was here. It looked like it was solid rock right there.
I mean. We're, we've gotta be a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty feet away from it.
I'm looking at the paint history of the sightline or close down.
That's correct. But if what I'm saying to you is this, I'm just doing this by hand right now. If that's forty feet, that's forty, that's eighty, that's one twenty, or probably more like around one fifty, one sixty feet back. Because it would have to be on the other side of Skyline Drive. So I mean, this house is very far away from it and we're not cutting any of the woods between the back of that house as shown on the plan and that particular portion of the trail. So there would be a very well wooded buffer.
The silver line you have here is two hundred and twenty feet from the existing driveway. And I believe the existing driveway, if I had the right driveway, is a trail over there now with a car.
I, I couldn't comment, I don't know, but I can, if you show it to me, I can tell you if it's the correct spot.
Maybe, I just wanna make sure I got the right.